All right, good evening. Okay, we're gonna get started. I'm gonna call the meeting order. Today is Tuesday, February 25th, 2014. It's 6:30 PM. This is the Olentangie Local Schools Board of Education Business Session. Scheduled for today. You're welcome. Mr. Carr, please call the roll.
This is John Byrne.
Here.
This is Weagle.
Here.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. White.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Black right here. Pledge of Allegiance. To the right of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as well. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. I do not believe we have any amendments to the agenda. Some move. Second, please. Please, Mr. King, in second. Any discussion on the agenda?
I would move we add a dialogue regarding Mr. Spina's blessing of the future. Very good. There was a special item.
Okay, in second, that was. None has died for that in a second. I have a.
This is Weagle.
Yes.
Yes. This is John Byrne.
Yeah.
Mr. White.
No.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yes.
Okay, we're now into the presentation items. So we have the middle school debate teams led by Beth Probst, Liberty Middle School, and Valley Chapel Shanahan Middle School. Please come and join me. Thank you for going last night.
Good evening. Very nice of you to invite the media out. Anyway, I would like to introduce myself. I'm Naomi Chubb. I am the head of the Shanahan Debate Club and on behalf of Beth and the community club. And myself, really, thanks for the opportunity to present today. And I would also like to thank everybody who's here. I'd like to thank her for the opportunity to take me to work with this wonderful club. It's been a great experience. It's been a huge learning experience, mostly for me, probably not so much for the kids. We're having a lot of fun, so I'm glad that I've been here today. So what are we doing this year at Debate Club in Shanahan? This is our first year in Debate Club, and we meet every Monday morning about 7:00 in the morning before school starts in Shanahan Library. And we had a few challenges right up front, mostly this whole man's winter. We took in two of our meetings and gave off another two meetings to the music departments, not so locally, but they needed a break for practices. So what we've done is we've scheduled a couple of extra evening meetings, usually at Panera, because Panera's very kind of us, developed the kids there. We have a student Sunday. We met in the library, reserved their rooms, and this week we have an extra meeting at the Shanahan team room. So as we get ready for a baby event that we're going to have in this Sunday, this is the first middle school debate competition with both of our clubs involved, which is very exciting about that, and we've been working very hard on that. So at Shanahan, what we've been doing, I had three main goals this year with the kids. The first goal was to find out where everybody is in terms of speaking ability. I want to make sure that we're all at the same level in terms of our presentation skills, because we have six, seven, and eight seniors in the club. The second goal that I had for the kids was to introduce to them middle school debate format and what that looks like. And if they can get a really good grasp on that. And then, first of all, I think this is most important, I want the kids to be able to step outside of their own perspectives and look at issues through the eyes of somebody else. And we've done several different avenues or avenues and methods of working in college. And I think that that's really important, because if they go on to high school and decide to do debates, if you started Debate Club in high school, they're going to learn that when they go to competition, they need to debate both sides of an argument. So they have to be well-informed on all sides of the issue, and all the stakeholders involved are able to argue both sides of that. That's what I think we're going to be able to do. We've accomplished these three goals, and we're still working on them. It's like I said, we totally accomplished them, but through several different methods. We had one outside speaker come into our club. It was Angela Hurd, who's a communications professor from Florida State Community College, and that was Beth's recommendation. She also came and spoke to the other club before ours. We've, I preached about a few mornings, of course, on my debate book, and it was a recommendation from Beth. And then we've done some debate exercises against during our meeting. We've been having a lot of fun and very high energy and we just, kids build some brains and play, play hard with it. Before I turn the floor over, because I know you brought it here from the kids and from me, but before I do that, I have to get through to the debate club's chair, because if she had not started the club last year, and if I could deal with last year, I would have time to read and admit it to you, and maybe not with you. And she does a lot, has this debate club, does her sport club, she's done something with the school government at the elementary school, so she's a great asset, so we can, she's a wonderful asset. I said, 44, I still live with the role models. When I grow up, I would like to be more like that. With that said, I have a few students that I would like to introduce to Shanahan. This is Ally. She's waiting for first, because she has to go to the high school for a game, and wants to have a meeting, correct? And then we have, I think, Raina Stacey next, and then Rebecca. And they are, they have been given eight comps. They got regular meetings started, so they've not had any preparation. And this is one of the events, simulation, one of the events that will take place this Sunday in our competition, is the competition of speaking. Right on the spot, get something to speak about, and then do it, prepare, and then go. That's what they're doing, and I'm going to turn the floor over to them.
Hi, I'm Ally. I'm in Shanahan. And my comp is, I've been learning about debate and how it's important and how. And I think that there are a lot of people who do that, debate and speaking should be, like, good. In fact, because if you want speaking skills, as probably are your pride, because if you have to say nothing to other people, and you're going to want to, you know, up your pride, you know, raise your voice, and act, and all those things, and speech meeting is always a good idea, I think. Another reason I thought was to start with criticism, and this is a big one, kind of, because it's hard to learn if you're speaking, and you don't really want to hear all your favorites on the song. But when you hear it, it makes it better, and you can go back and practice, and you're building on it, and you're building on it. And then you can keep against other people and see what other people are doing. And I think that's really great, that you can do challenges, push yourself, push yourself further and further. Another one is group work, with the debate back and forth. You are put into a group of people, and sometimes it's weird to lie on yourself to get all the work done, but people, other people break in, new ideas, and they create new kinds of concepts. And it can make your debate a lot more diverse and interesting, because you have other people working to do than yourself. I've had a lot of friends that are interested in debate. I've done a couple of cases for this, but I've met a lot of other people who have the same interests that we do, who like to public speak, who like to just have fun and stuff, and we've just made a lot of people with the same interests. And it's competitive in an academic way, because if you don't like sports, or you have a career span, you're busy with your career or something that you're doing, or whatever, you can, you can kind of live in a way that's not as physical or as, and you're still being, writing your story, and you're doing some, all sorts of things on it. And another major introduction, and kind of your own life skill, you're kind of right, you're kind of creative, and you're alive, and I think that's great.
My name is Lauren Lortor, and I'm a seventh grader at Shanahan. This year, I learned about researching from both sides of the topic, that, like, if you get one topic, you have to look at both ends of it. Because in before debate, I would usually just get, like, your advice and stick to one side without actually, so if I take a fight in the decision. So this club, I learned a lot more to read the games, like, with either both sides and researching of both sides too. And I also learned a lot about public speaking. And in the future years to come, I would like to work more on both of those and make them as good as I can possibly make them. And in this Saturday's competition, I'll be participating in the theme of, speaking about the end of slavery, whether or not there's time to go back.
Very good.
I'm Rebecca Topfett, and I'm a sixth grader. And at the very first meeting, I wrote down why I wanted to join the debate club, and someday when I grow up, I want to be a judge or a prosecutor, a future president of the United States. And so the debate club has helped me follow, get to those goals, by being able to then use the debate style and presentation skills that I hadn't known before I joined the club. And it's very fun to be able to share my opinions with others without being criticized in a way that you can't learn from. You also then got the feeling to mention that I wanted to sound if I had of joined the debate club, because you need information to back up your debate. And when I completed things in the middle school, I was making my own speech, probably originally with people. And I would spend the heart and the shelter with me of German and my stuff. And I've learned lots of information about that, which means that I'm in the debate club. And I've been to perform at my best, but often inside of the debate club. And that's how the debate club has helped me learn, mixed up, and get myself comfortable, and hope to become the president of the debate club.
I'll be brief in the essence of time, but my name is Beth Probst, and I'm a parent volunteer here at the Liberty Middle School Debate Club. My son, Will Burna, is on the end, and he's got Austin in the corner, and I'm Liberty. I mostly wanted to let them say a few words about the club, but more than anything, I would like to say that I'd like to tell them that the idea was mine, to come up with a club, but it was really Austin's mom's, and I can't, so I really had to explain. Each and every Thursday morning at 6:00 p.m., I think, okay, so that goes by many others as being a good idea, and it's been great fun putting the club together. There are no other debate clubs in central Ohio in middle school. In fact, they're very few in the state of Ohio. So I looked initially for someone that I could lay off of, I mean, somebody must have a book for this. And there was a book, literally a book, but that was my, that was my guide. So with Blackley's initial ongoing support, it's been amazing, and last year we had about 12 students, had a great time. This year, we have 45 students who get up every single Thursday morning to go to school, and we try to believe in them about these things. And that's my stock stock every day, I just try to say a few stuff to everyone. So with that, I'll review more, and this is, we know time to do this, but.
Hello, everyone. I am Lauren Gooding, an eighth grader from Olentangie Middle School. I will be giving you a rundown of what we do as a club, things I personally learned, as well as how amazing it is that 40 kids can get up at 7:00 in the morning and come together and eat delicious pastries. Every Thursday. And every Thursday at the club, if you know, you're a student, you're waking up early, you're feeling groggy, you're tired, your energy level is at zero, then you come to school. Come into the library, you are greeted by Mr. Probst, and you rise to 20 right there. And then you start to talk to your friends. Sit down, eat a couple of doughnuts, and you're 5, you're 50 by then, totally. Start preparing for your debate. You are at 60. And then, once you finally get up, you start speaking, you start talking about something you're passionate about, you are at 110, through the roof. There is no rush, like debating, for sure. Things I learned personally from Debate Club are speaking skills, which I have to say, it's so great to learn, as well as being very difficult. I mean, instead of being, you're just out, you're speaking, you're confident, you're loud, which is great. You can handle a casual debate as well as formal debate, kind of like deciding on what pizza to get, rather than deciding if it's right or wrong to have the death penalty. So that's always a big thing, a good skill to learn, just for life in general. Also, one of the things that Miss Probst has been getting here for years is that debate is not arguing at all. Arguing is yelling at this person, just being completely opinionated. Well, debate, you are calmer, first of all, most of the time. You have your facts down, and you just, all right, let's go to the floor. Also, you learn many social skills. You're with 40 kids every Thursday morning. You make friends, you get to talk to people, you get to debate with people, you get to have friendly competitions, which is a great thing to have with kids in general. You have been a lovely crowd. And now that you know what we actually do with the club, I'd like to introduce Austin.
Hi, my name is Austin Wang, and I'm giving, like, I'll give a brief rundown on how the competition, the speaking competition, I have a little bit to mention. So first thing you need to know is none of us had ever been to a speaking competition beforehand, not even this is true. We did some preparation beforehand, it's been, it was three weeks. And when we got there, we didn't have any experience, and so.
We called the local conference, and we went to the fall, we were invited by a department of science and research, and we had competitors, we had high school students, we had university students, and some four, six, seven, and eight seniors, and they tried by five, and I didn't win, so I apologize for that.
Okay, so there were four types of speaking categories that we've been covered into. There was the last poetry, which is where you take quotes from different authors and, like, different, like, the author's, whatever. There was, and there was also original reporting, according to Logan, Logan essay, or story, or poem, and everyone wanted, and you read it all out. There was also a talk due, which was, as you know before, you're giving two sentences that you can pick which one you want to speak on, and then you either agree or disagree. And who, and, yeah, that was it. So when we, how it works is we screw around, we're judging each other, we speak to them, and then they give you a score. Not how, they give you a score, it's always 100, and they also give you a score based on what place you get. And then they added your scores, and some of them had the lowest score, which is our goal. And so although we didn't win any trophies, for team or individual, as a whole, I think our debate club did very well. We actually had two students play first places, and one of the rounds. And overall, I thought it was a lot of fun, it was a great experience, I think everybody knows it, and it also provided some great, like, real-life experiences outside of the classroom, beginning with the.
Hello, my name is Wolf Burna, and during my time here, I'd like to talk to you about the concept of having debate clubs at all of our middle schools and high schools. First off, we cater to the kids who are competitive, but do not like sports. Because currently, in all of our middle, in all of our middle schools and high schools, there are few clubs that are geared more towards competitive events, but aren't sports, but only a few. So by putting Debate Club in all the middle schools and high schools, we would be, we would be able to encourage kids to be more social at their school. Secondly, by putting Debate Club in the high schools, we could go to competition against other schools, like up at Arlington, as Austin has previously mentioned. And from a tactical standpoint, while in middle school competitions in our own district, we could learn about our competitors' strengths and weaknesses, and use those against them in our high school competition system. Lastly, I would like to thank all of you for letting us have this time to talk to you about speaking debate club. Thank you.
I can't remember your name and everything's dressed there. Rebecca, I'm gonna write it down, Rebecca, because let me tell you, one of the signs of a really good speaker and a really influential person is when you write down something they say while they're speaking. And you made a reference to this allows you to be criticized in a way you can learn from. That is an excellent phrase. And so I want to make sure I remember your name and that phrase, so that when you're president one day, I can say, I wrote down this wonderful nugget of wisdom, so. I know, maybe, but, but, so, to be able to lean stuff and see the energy that you guys have, it just warms my heart. And I, do we have official debate clubs at any of those shows? Yeah, because I know they had a club that was kind of a get-together and debate about stuff that lived for a while, but, but. But they're not, there's not a competition, they have speech, but not. Well, I get the feeling they'll start close. I get the feeling they will, they will reach, whatever, high school, they'll end up being the people that started, and I would feel the same, and the support, I know that I can do. That'd be awesome. Great job.
I'd just want to use here to give the reports in class now, just for the, for the student.
Oh, yeah. Okay, yeah, right.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for spending your time tonight.
You are welcome to stay, because you understand, I'm sure you'd like to leave. Next item is the Board Presidents Report. I've got three things I'd like to cover, then I'm gonna ask Julie to jump in and cover a final item. Let me start with an item that Mr. White referenced. We had a letter from a resident regarding a busing proposal. So if you want to talk about it tonight, I just want to make sure it was out there that we invited that resident in to come talk about his proposal. Unfortunately, he was unable to make it, so we continue to work with that resident on ensuring that his concerns are heard and that his concept is better. So I want to make sure that was out there. Second, I wanted to update the board on an item from my last President Report. When we last met at a business session, I reported that Judge Krueger had ruled in favor of the board and dismissed the suit brought against the board by Mr. White. I also indicated that there's a 30-day appeal period that lasted through February 16th. On February 13th, Mr. White did in fact file his appeal, challenging the judge's decision on two fronts. First, the judge, he's alleging, or arguing that the judge erred by strictly rather than liberally construing the open meeting statute. And second, that there was an error in finding a fact concerning the use of the concept of public business. It is expected that the appeal prolongs litigation by several months. And it was important to update the community since we talked about it in our last President Report. The second item I wanted to cover was community dialogue. It's a board action item tonight, which amends the board's agenda to remove the community dialogue from our calendar. That was a practice that we actually started over a year ago, October of 2012, that we have frankly struggled with attendance, struggled with participation. So while the board is very committed to transparency and communication in the community, that was not the proper form, it didn't appear to be a form that the community was taking advantage of. So while we are removing it from the calendar going forward, I think as a board, we remain committed to being as accessible as possible and always open to new avenues, using the vote, state and public participation, et cetera. The last item, I asked Julie to take another legislative update. Given the governor's state of the state last night, the Clean Day bill has been put into the legislature, as well as some funding issues, but Julie, he's closest to these items, to give us something to do with that.
Regarding the governor's state of the state that was presented last night, he did speak to education issues, particularly, his idea is to bring vocational education down to the middle school level, to start at seventh grade. But he didn't provide us with any concrete ways of doing that yet. And I do have to preface this, that anything that is said in the state of the state would have to be enacted either through the legislature, or it would also have to go through the State Board of Education before we would have to adhere to that. So these are just ideas, you know, ideas that we could see come up through the legislative process or through the State Board of Education. I know that in Delaware City schools, Mr. Wright's wife does a kind of a vocational teaching at the middle school level, because she is also, she works for the Delaware City School District, but she also works for the Delaware Area Career Center. And so that's one example of bringing vocational education down into the middle school level. And she's dealing with specific students and has had tremendous results in keeping those students in school and providing them with additional educational opportunities. So in April, we will be going to the Delaware Area Career Center. I sit on that board, and I'm president this year, and we even discussed this proposal at our Career Center board meeting. And while we don't have specifics on that as of yet, the Career Center is, you know, willing to help in any way, and hopefully we'll have more concrete ideas in April when we go to the Career Center. The governor did not touch on any specific funding models or changes of funding models for the paid and enrolled education. But we anticipate there could be something coming through what is called a mid-biennial review, and that's something that this governor instituted two years ago, and we saw major changes in the MBR, in the MBR, when he did it two years ago. So we'll have to wait and see, because there are some tax proposals that he has put forward. Whenever there's tax proposals on one side, there's revenue issues on the other, and revenue issues, they, sometimes they do impact public education, so we'll have to keep an eye on that. In the State House, there are a couple of bills that I just want to bring up. First, there's House Bill 393, and this is an idea that the governor had as well, that is now going through the legislative process. And that would be to publish a career guide online. I don't know exactly where it would appear yet, on the State Board of Education website or on the State Workforce website, but it would be a career guide so that students can know what are the top jobs needed to be filled in the state of Ohio. So that as they're making their decisions towards college, or going to a, more of a career route, they could see what jobs are available in the state of Ohio. So that sounds really interesting, and that's moving through the legislative process right now. I'll be interested to see how they put that together, I think it'd be very helpful for our students. Also, Representative Renner has House Bill 328 that would provide additional funding for schools, school districts such as Olentangie, in Delaware, probably Big Walmart as well, that are seeing growth. And he was, I have to give Representative Renner kudos for proposing this bill, and to say that he is listening to us, when he hears that we say, hey, we are severely being impacted by our growth. However, I'm not sure how far this bill is going to go. His bill proposes, proposes that districts that are seeing large growth would be receiving not the guarantee that we get right now, but perhaps $1,000 per student, or get additional funding based on growth. The issue of basing additional funding on growth is that as we add more students, if it's a percentage, then it's harder and harder and harder to keep that percentage. Right now, in the bill, it's 3%. So as we grow, even though we may not be growing at 3%, we still feel that impact of growth. Representative Renner sent the, sent the bill out to all of us for comments, and my comment to him was, while I appreciate the time that we spent on this, our effective growth is in the, is in the schools right now. And this bill wouldn't become law until fiscal year 16. So we're, we've felt the impact for years behind, and we continue to feel the impact now. If there was something that could be done sooner rather than later, that would be great. And I also commented, as did several other superintendents in the area, about the 3% growth may not be achievable, but because of our large amount of students, but any growth is for pulls to lots. So we'll keep an eye on that. I believe there's a hearing tomorrow afternoon, because he's trying to get people to testify on that bill tomorrow afternoon, and the Education Committee in the House meets at 5:00 in the afternoon on Wednesdays. And the education committee in the house meets at five o'clock in the afternoon on Wednesdays. Finally, um, one bill that's received a lot of debate is the Calamity Day bill, um, in the house. It's House Bill, um, 416. And then in the senate, they have a similar bill, 284. The house passed theirs last week and it, there was an amendment on the floor that amended the bill. The original bill would add four calamity days to the school calendar. It was amended on the floor that those four calamity days would erase any days that the students had had to take because of bad weather. Uh, but the teachers would have to come in for two of those four calamity days, uh, for professional development. Um, that passed in the house. Um, we at Owentangie had already passed, we'd already adopted the blizzard bags. So this doesn't impact us yet if it goes through to law, because we actually have one more blizzard bag day that we can use, um, to make up a day that we missed due to a calamity. Um, so I'm knocking on wood, but we don't have to use that or don't have to be, um, take advantage of anything that would, um, pass in the legislature. Um, this bill now moves to the senate. The senate has kind of the same bill. Um, it's a little different and whenever you get bills that are even just a little bit different, they have to go to a conference committee before they can be hammered out and come into law and then signed by the governor. Um, so it was hoped that today, the senate's bill and House Bill 416 would be heard today in the senate education committee. But as I, as I left work this afternoon, I didn't have any outcomes yet. Um, so I don't know if it, it got heard or if it got voted out of the senate education committee, either bill, um, that way. The difference between the senate and the house bill was the senate bill still allowed for those four extra days. Um, it just didn't take into consideration, um, making two of those days professional development days for teachers. So that was the main difference in those bills. Representative Brenner did offer up an amendment, um, to this bill to not add days, but to add, um, um, time in the day in 30-minute increments. Uh, but that did not get, um, passed in the house. So that's not part of this bill, but I appreciate him, you know, trying to think outside the box, um, for the students who do need to make up days. And it's important to note that while Owentangie has the, has taken advantage of the blizzard bag opportunities, there are school districts in the state that have missed up to 17 days because they're more rural. And so, um, this bill is really trying to grant them some help so that they don't have to make up all those days that they, that they have missed. So we'll just keep an eye on it and hopefully we don't have any more calamity days that we have to take here. Yeah, here in Owentangie. So stay prepared.
Thank you very much. Lesson. Regardless of whether the resident's able to make it or not, I still think that the, um, issue has value in talking about, uh, protecting, enabling the kids that don't have means to be able to get to school and make sure they have something in place to educate the public, public. That concludes the present report. Uh, the chief of present report.
Thank you, Mr. White. Good evening, everyone. Uh, just a couple of things. Julie, thank you for bringing to the, uh, to our attention a couple of, uh, of those items, uh, I wanted to address. Uh, Calamity Day, I'm not going to say much about outside of the fact, not the day for anyone's spirit, but we're here in Monday. We're supposed to get another mega storm, just throwing that out there. Uh, and that would of course be a big number of days for us. Uh, and that would, uh, would be usually the third day of those two blizzard bags that have passed. Uh, so let's, uh, let's hope that doesn't happen, but there's a potential for that. Also, Mr. Kern and I met with Representative Brenner last week in regard to his, uh, his proposal. Uh, and again, I think Julie did her best job, uh, giving an overview. Uh, I think the growth factor, uh, I think is one of the talks that he's been about, uh, the potential of eliminating, he's receptive to that. Also, uh, the thousand dollars, uh, and then he will have, I think it's been testified tomorrow night. Uh, he wanted more in line with, uh, what's the charge on public spending on building services? It could be approximately 1,060, 1,070 dollars in that neighborhood. Uh, more of a rationale of okay, let's, let's make a minimum of funding of local communities to be supported on publics. Uh, and he was receptive to that also. Uh, again, uh, he will have proposed testimony tomorrow night beginning at five o'clock. Uh, our hope is that we have various representatives from the whole community. Uh, last but not least, uh, I just, I think we have talked about this, uh, this word about the pathway, prosperity and that whole concept of, uh, vocational, uh, career education down to, at the junior high level, uh, the middle school level. Which by the way, I think is a great idea outside of the fact that I know a lot of people at point one, point two still don't know what they want to do or what they want to think. So I think it's a great idea that we begin that, that conversation. Uh, we are part of that call pathways, prosperity, uh, straightening grants. Uh, and it is very much a model of, of a career path. What would you like to be? What, what do you have to do for example, the medical field? There are so many different fields in the medical field that you can, uh, go into and blow our, what is the pay? How much will you make? How many years of, uh, higher ed do you have to take? Both the types of conversations that we are having. And we had that conversation at a business advisory council, uh, after a week or so ago. Business, uh, representatives, they're very receptive to that concept. So, uh, we already have mentorships at our high schools in regard to that. Uh, we already have, uh, Project Base Nine at the seventh grade level. Next year we're talking about some STEM offerings and that whole concept of the, of the career song coming in and talking to our kids about good options. See, we have done that and we'll continue to do that and we're very much in favor of all of that. So if there are businesses out there listening, that would be interested in partnering with Owentangie and would not be invited to a business advisory council, we definitely want to get you there. It's February, the end of February, early March. As you know, that means that the winter seasons are winding down and that even means the return to play and state championships and so on and so forth. So it's a great opportunity, uh, to talk about the good things that happened in our school district. And, uh, I can't think of a better thing to start out than the meeting on the pre-transporting kids. Uh, the evolved is, uh, Liberty High School, uh, state diving champ three times in a row, set a new state record, uh, first place in the one-year diving category. Uh, second place, by the way, at Liberty High School, Cameron Thatcher, uh, state runner-up. Uh, not bad at all. Extremely proud of those programs. Uh, most importantly, we're very proud of the way those students and coaches represent the Owentangie community. Very proud of that. Next, uh, this was National Signing Day this past week. Uh, we had 26 district dollar athletes announce their college choices. I was actually looking at the, uh, the vote for Owentangie High School today. We had 12 over there, we had 14 at Liberty. Uh, and again, uh, not only does these individuals, uh, serve our community and our school system very well as high schoolers, they're going to take their talent home to the next level. I'm sure they'll be extremely successful and we're very proud of them and we wish them luck.
None of that, uh, important?
No. Delaware Arts Castle High School art exhibit, uh, Orange High School, Amanda Ball painting spectacularly fantastic, named festive show. Uh, we had 18 awards presented to district high school students. Uh, and, uh, we're very, very proud of those individuals also. I don't know if you're getting opportunities with our arts festival, uh, but we have some three talented individuals. Uh, it's different, that'll be coming up at the end of spring. Uh, we encourage everyone to take the opportunity to attend that show. Along with that, we had Liberty Township, there are nearly approximately 1,000 recital bins. Uh, they are now in place throughout the school district. Other good things, it's, uh, also time for the spellings. And there are just winners that we have, we have seven building-level winners that will be advancing to the state level, March 22nd at the Ohio University. Uh, and there are seven individuals, uh, in the schools that they represent. Eight National Marriage Scholarship Program finalists, there's Liberty, there's Orange. Uh, again, uh, this is the time of year, and as you know, by the way, we, we do have the community awards coming up. I believe that's a, the May fourth meeting where we have about one hour's worth of, uh, individuals coming to the podium. So we will receive any of these students at that time, I'm sure. Race to the top, we've talked about the grammar, you see my voice and calls for compensation, grant components. Uh, just a reminder, what does that cover? Professional development, uh, building resource fund, student group support, uh, parent and student surveys, communication efforts that take place throughout the school district. Uh, and again, uh, if you've got additional questions in regard to that experience, please, uh, call us, come see us. Uh, board action items this evening, I'm going to brief in such a form that because this is what you do, as it says. Uh, strategic task force updates, uh, we still have, we'll be getting a, a report on that. Uh, we have, as Mr. Brian has already linked to, community dialogue session alternatives. Last but not least, uh, as you recall, our last work session, we had the president's patient from, uh, Nancy Shapiro, a resolution for a safe route to the school branch. Um, and I'm not going to go into specific details, because we had a great conversation and discussion at that board meeting. But as you can see, the main focus of this is to develop safer opportunities to walk and bike here. Four of our district schools, whether it be Allen Creek, Luthers, Oak Creek, and Tyler Run. Attend items. I'm not going to steal Mr. Kern's thunder. Uh, I, I would just put that up there, the, uh, affirming another individual in the department, that's all I will say. And the other part, uh, this is a little bit different. We did this in the fall, its recognition from the executive director of community resources. We did that that way and forced that name to the media the last minute, right? Uh, that would be my sister and she was the rules tennis coach in the fall. Uh, she's now being recommended to be the boys assistant tennis coach in the spring at Liberty High School. Uh, so we are asking for, for approval on that. Upcoming community, uh, presentations. I didn't know, know, have heard of Dr. Mike Halston. Uh, he's very well-known, known in, uh, central Ohio, throughout the state. Strategies for Saving Your Sanity. Of course, that's, uh, dealing with alcohol and drugs. Uh, March 19th, seven o'clock, Liberty High School. And that is another community program sponsored by our PPT parents program team. Uh, so we're very much looking forward to that. We encourage parents, students, community members to come out to that. And like, if you've never had or have never experienced Dr. Mike, he's, uh, he kind of reminds me of Lawrence. The debate is very energetic and enthusiastic and, uh, really gets your attention. And, uh, it would be very beneficial night for anyone who chooses to attend. Also, we have the six annual Spirit of Owentangie Community Night. That's, uh, sponsored by our, our education foundation. That is March 8th, that's coming very soon at 7:30. A little different this year in regards to where it is, with the shops at Olympic Place and Edgey, all of those. Um, the OYAP is responsible for raising funds for student scholarships and teacher grants. Uh, it's a, a very enjoyable night, uh, a great community get-together. I would encourage all of you to be there, uh, and, uh, enjoy that evening with our community members. And that was all I had for this evening. I would, uh, uh, ended with just a, a thank you. I wish the best, best post and, and have each other here, uh, to do a very, very, uh, fine job of attending the most important events for the time and the effort, uh, and the volunteer, uh, for the, the vision of the public. With that said, I wouldn't have any questions that the board may have. Thank you so much.
Next up is the treasure report, if you have anything left to offer.
Actually, quite a bit to see. One thing, touched upon several things that Mrs. Fevel brought up, uh, House Bill 228. Uh, just a little piece of information on that. If we were to get a thousand of our pupils, uh, under that bill, it would be an additional 9.2 million dollars, uh, for the, uh, FY16. Uh, it's far from where we should be, you know, if you look at the current form of, uh, the game caps that were instituted. Uh, we get about 8.2, that's what we're getting, over 42 million. So, uh, that would be a, a very helpful, it'd be nice if we were fully funded, uh, whoever gets there, but you got to start somewhere.
You want to mention that, by the way, that it's not fully funded?
Good. So we won't be coming back to that for a very, 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 very time.
It's like 2024, I'll say, people, 2024 is a very long time, a very long time.
We're penalized because the state sees us as a wealthy school district. So we don't, the school funding formula does not work for us. It has what we can, or we see.
So, so, so. So, just a little affirmation on that, just a little background. Of course, we shared all that. Uh, the biggest match of this evening, uh, on the summers, uh, we'd be hired this evening. As you know, the, uh, the site will appear, uh, Dr. Johnson, uh, going to be, uh, with this half field up. And, uh, this summer, our, this summer, she's saying, replacing Emily. And, uh, she is a graduate, Megan Kriehl, a graduate of Walsh University, uh, at Danahawke. And worked since 2008, she's worked for the State's Office most recently as, uh, not a manager, so, uh, maybe look yourself up. Be a nice, nice spot for us.
So again, this is just pulling staff, no new FTE really, just, uh, the other ones.
Um, things on the agenda for this evening, uh, as far as treasure action items. Uh, we're approving four amendments for January 7th, 23rd, and February 6th. I would like to point out, uh, it's not, didn't, didn't need a, a change, but just a change that would be noted when we do the final amendment. Exhibit C1, uh, we repeated, uh, we did, uh, page 26.
It's five of 20.
Yes, and if you look at, Julie, I think, uh, exhibit C1, pages two of.
Two and three of.
Yeah, pages two and three of one. Uh, if you look at the very right-hand corner, we have duplicated 26, 40, uh, the pages, uh, build the corrections and the final. Also on this evening, it is approval of the financials for January 2014. Just want to point out a few things, uh, pretty much on as projected for the year. Things I want to point out, revenue, uh, just again to repeat, uh, especially since it's a one-time thing. Uh, you noticed the positive earnings, all other financing sources, revenue is, uh, 1.825 million dollars. That again was due to, uh, Delaware County Auto issuing, uh, this refund of the real estate assessment fees. Uh, the product was on plan to be, uh, there again, that is a one-time thing. Last time maybe she was about six years ago, so hopefully it will more often, maybe we'll be having access to it. Uh, otherwise, we, uh, pretty much on projected. Of course, looking budget time right now, budgets are back to the buildings and departments, uh, next week, I believe, in March. So, so we'll sit down as a, as a, as a, also for the, we'll be finding some hard, uh, as we present now, uh, the budget, uh, the updated, uh, forecast. Just some items on the agenda this evening.
Uh, Mr. Kern, so before you jump up, if you think it's important, have you been able to get through the winter? Because of the bad weather, cold, without really significant major experience in Riceville, manage overtime, following, uh, that's credit to the team to get through that. And then that first, you know, uh, filling up the budget process.
Did a good job of teeing it up right now. So we'll talk about that. I know that's, uh, kind of on the agenda since you're talking about it right now. Um, we had, due to, you know, flashing buildings and, uh, snow removal and stuff like that, we had incurred 24,000 additional overtime. Uh, for that, uh, we also have an additional 12,000 traditional saw bits used in our part of the town. So we use, uh, according to Mr. Gore's office, 240 more tons than we have compared to last year at this point. Nice thing is, we played God bless, we, we did a solid issue, we could come pretty risky. So that offset, uh, we're still waiting on, uh, we did have additional natural gasses, this is compared to this January and last year. Uh, I'll give that, I'll look forward to it. And then the next thing along with that, we talked about planning, because we only have a Blizzard run, so it doesn't require people to come to school. We have to have extra days. Had we had to make up days, we don't have to pay the teachers, but primarily transportation, food service, some of our aides and secretaries. For every day that we would have to give a session, we on, make up the days, it would have to be $6,000, $7,000. Literally. Since we haven't had the Blizzard backs. Some items off the agenda, this is back on the agenda for treasure action. We do have, we do have some appropriations, things that could be approved, also the park raiders are going on, the buildings are seeing activities. We're also approving amounts and rates of certified Delaware County Audit, exhibit C5. Like I mentioned, this is just essentially a procedural thing that's necessary, that all of the board approve. And then finally, donations to the district, exhibit C5. From Heritage PTO, Heritage, Illinois Elementary School, 12,000 computers and Chrome notebooks. And then helping by my niece, that was an office visit. And we also have Target Field Trip Scholarship America, $700, living tree entry. Barbara Wilcox, two-step response systems, teaching in another school, $1,030. And then, two-of-a-settled by us, Cross Bridges, along from high school, from the first year, about $7,000. That is items on the agenda this evening. One item that has, I've already touched on some items off the agenda, but I want to touch on is, ODEP just finally released the new report card financial data. Data looks a little different than you've seen in past years. It was just released Friday, so I haven't really had time to do much, you know, analyzing it as compared to other districts and stuff. But some real quick points to point out. One of the things, as part of the middle expenditure kind of standards is, they will look and see how much money is spent on classroom instruction. So what they did is they looked, they took us, we're required by a uniformed school accounting system, the code expenditure is certain. So they took those expenditure, how we fill them, and determine what is classroom and what is non-classroom instruction. And then what they did is rank us on in a comparison group. Our comparison group is 10 districts. There's the only comparison thing, there's no social economic, there's a whole lot of too lightness to it. And it's just that we have enrollment over 10, actually 14 of them, but Cleveland, Columbus, Cincinnati, City, are not regular. But we're four out of 10, we're behind Dublin, Philly, and Panama. Theirs is 74.9, 74% of Philly, 72.7% of Panama, 72.1% of us. As far as the 10 districts that are on, that we're compared to, like I said, enrollment is basically the only thing that they group, just really the only ones that are, normally seeing are similar districts that we have out, that we compare ourselves to, or ODEP causes a similar socioeconomic, such as number of bachelor degrees, median income and such. Dublin would be one, Philly is one, we only see on theirs. The other, other schools, of the 10 comparisons would be Mason City and Dakota. As far as that's concerned, as a district, we are at 72.4% classroom instruction. Is higher than the average for our comparison group, and also higher for the state. We're spending more in classroom than the state as far as a percentage. And of those 10 districts that I talked about, only one has an expenditure per equivalent of people, which is new term and new expenditure, kind of rating system. Is only Dakota is less than us, at 7,927. Our spending per pupil data is, we're 8,342. There again, we're underneath the statewide average of 3,300. So we were spending additional $500. I mean, it's happening, just like I said, so we feel we're doing pretty good with this information. One thing I'd like to point out too, the expenditure per quote on pupil is a different formula in a way, it's calculated. The old model, which by the way, if you look at FY12, they call the old expenditure the old model. You were about 95, 99 was our cost per pupil. It did do, it's not an actual report card, but it was in some of the data pulled out. This year, our athletic routine, I'm sorry, would have been 94, approximately. So we're already not the old formula anyway, when we did costs or expenditure per pupil.
That would be important to review, but the people have been quite a bit. It's kind of newly defined, something to think about, how we educate the community about that. So if you understand, we've got a new definition, it's not comparable necessarily to the other number.
And the one thing, yeah, the one thing, and you notice it's a lot, we're actually lower, you know, as they're about 9400, this is 8342. What they've done is when they're doing the per pupil thing, they've weighted enrollment or the APM, maybe more additional ways for special certification, English language learners, and kids on, kids on free reducing. They took that population, gave additional. So what you could see is when you're trying to do some ratings, the districts that have more of those, say, for example. Reynoldsburg, who has normally been more of a cost per pupil greater than us, they're almost the same as us, or very even less than us. Those districts have a very kind of different dynamics in their history. But does change the perspective, typically we look at, I don't like the Franklin Delaware County, but some of the districts, so that could have a grand. We'll go look at that more detail in our offices, looking at that, so. Report back to.
Maybe some back in March, right? It's additional color, give you some kind of.
We'll grab it out and stuff.
Because this information's going to be included now with the state report cards. So you'll get your state report card for your district, your school, and then also get the district file.
So, any questions on that, like I said, that's the high, high U of it. Our report card data, it's like, like I said, we're going to be set up, as we're used to seeing.
Do you know if there's something to do in Compton, or?
It's a great question, really, I'm not sure, because in the past, if you remember, we have hard to live, three columns of data. We reference this quite a bit when we're out in public, comparing different things, it's 60 or 70 different lines, really good information. I've always had, we have long tandies, we have the similar districts, and we have the statewide averages as well. First of all, the expense per pupil is one of those lines, and that has changed. I don't, I'm assuming if they do do it, or you think the spending for the, or the expansion for equivalent people information out there. I don't know, I don't know, because I haven't seen any talk on similar districts. You go to ODEP's website, I'm just putting on how they still show the similar districts. I don't know if they still have Compton, hopefully they do, because they do very distinct information, public and. Has some good information, people out there, the reference, how to do a hard one. It's still an improvement, that explains the regulations, so. No, not, not that. It's considered, I'm sorry, Adam has considered what they call not operating. This is, when they talk about the classroom and non-classroom instruction, that's what they, what they already term as operating.
On the Blizzard bank, you mentioned, they have a lot of, they have that just because the materials aren't prepared or. If they say by law, well, you can only have a limit, you have.
Anything else for Mr. Kern or Dr.? Okay, that concludes treasure report, we will now go to public participation session number one for general comments. We'll now go to discussion items, this is the strategic task force follow-up, everyone should have received in their materials, exhibit B, which we reviewed and edited the last meeting.
Yeah, not much to update on it, just a sort of reworking of some of the groups. Updating of their names, updating of what they're charged to do, and the formation of the new executive committee. I think we covered most of, what I got, I got a note from Dave, talking about the number of representatives per committee. And I think Dave, the reason it was on, a lot of them was one, was because of the size of the board, when you have the add 10 people. I think it's good practice to always have one and a backup. But I don't know that we officially need to say that we're being assigned to, and that would be my recommendation.
Really, just giving four opportunities to one member, especially when you're considering. So rather than giving them the wrong, I understand, it's a little small, but it's just, it's just an opportunity, that's why we got that.
So, you know, back to the way I'm ready to, we've been operating under this from Facilities Committee, State Department, calling it the right thing. But I think it's been practiced, we've always had to, and whether, you know, one of the backups or. Who's going to change, you know?
Yeah, he could.
Or leave it as one.
He could say up two, like you've done a lot of, go up two. How do you get the flexibility to move?
I just want to be able to prove this.
To prove it as amended, and then add the words up two.
Where does that add upside?
In the section, then each other organization will say, or will put two members as a liaison. But it said, Facilities Committee, the rest of them all say one member, so they can all be changed to public.
Oh, like each one of you.
Yeah. And all the rest of them say that. So if you choose, you should say up two, remember.
Any other discussion?
Also, we're on a very similar community, that's important, so, bias around the executive committee. We will have that somebody break this down, because I think that's something that they have figured out on that.
Next item is public, just a public participation session number two, the graphic action items. I will present board action items, A, B, and C for consideration.
Several.
Second, please, any second, any discussion? And again, it's, we're approving the strategic task force document as of now. So with that, this is called Mr. Kern, Mrs. Fevel.
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Dumbarton?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. So board action of A, B, and C, passport. Mr. Kern, you want to present the treasure action items?
Yes.
Pull out B.
Pull out B, just B.
Yeah.
The others following you home, we're pulling out B, which is the.
So as far as treasure action items, action items, A, C, through.
Second.
Any discussion?
Mrs. Dumbarton?
Yes.
Mrs. Fevel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, so treasure action of A, C, D, and E. The minutes, the adjusted appropriations, Delaware County, amounts and rates, and donations for approved.
Treasure action is to prove D, the financial for 10,000.
Several. Several.
Any discussion on the financials?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Dumbarton?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, so the January financial pass, what are the? Sorry, Dr. Lucas, is that superintendent action?
Wait.
Yes, would you pull out these? A1, 2, 4, 5, and C, please.
A1, 2, 4, 5, and C.
So, take those first?
Yep.
So superintendent action items, A1, 2, 4, 5, and C, we're approved. Okay, and so let me make sure people follow on some items. A1 is administrative employment toward the county, global literature, professional development. All the supplemental positions, and the people activity supervisors are more biased, like coaches and advisors. And C is tuition for attorneys for teen seniors of 15. So the items under consideration. Any discussion?
This is called one, Mrs. Dumbarton?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fevel?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. So item superintendent action of A1, 2, 4, 5, and item C, pass, 41.
As presented superintendent action items, A, 3, 6, 7, 8, D, and C, we're approved.
Several.
And those items are just, the teen hiring, the reservations, as well as graduating seniors. I have a vote in a second, any second.
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dumbarton?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, so those items pass 5, 2, 0. So, I'll present, I think we did last time. The executive director, human resources operations, his action item, Mr. Marsh, this would be to appoint Nancy Lucas as the boys' assistant track coach for the spring at Liberty High School.
She can be back soon.
On a motion?
Several.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Mrs. Dumbarton?
Yes.
Mrs. Fevel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. That concludes our action items, we will now move into the executive session to, as provided by section 121.22, with a higher vice code to discuss the purchase of property for public purposes. Motion to enter executive question, please?
Several.
Second?
A second.
Any discussion? What I will add is we will not be taking any action when we return, we will be coming with a jury. Please come on.
Mrs. Dumbarton?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fevel?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes, that passes five minutes. Thank you for attending, and hope to see you next time.